Okay.
Would you like it? Are you called?
Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. It is December the 4th and we're here at the Assessment Appeal Board Meeting. It is about 9:20 and I'm going to call the meeting to order. First, first item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Can you please all stand so we could do our pledge?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, United States of America. Republic, one nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and right.
Next, we have our public comments. And we set aside the first 15 minutes for any members of the public to address the board or any matters that are jurisdictional of the board but not appealing, appearing in the agenda. The board will not, will not take action if the item is presented under public comments. Being that we have no one here in the public, we will move on to number four, that is the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Do we have a motion?
A second?
We have a first and a second. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? None. So the consent calendar has been approved. We're moving on to the hearings. And so we have, the hearings are all parties, there are the attendants providing testimonies for their scheduled hearing, signed, and the OHS are sworn in. We have 5A, 00013, DeSanti Pad, 25012. And I'll have the, I don't have the party here, but we do have our assessors here. So can we hear from you guys?
Yes, Brian Glover, representing the Assessor's Office. We were able to come to an agreement on these. So Leif Saros receives stipulations from the applicant. And I have copies here, signed by the assessor, put together. This, in these two particular cases, there was, this was a transfer of an orchard and involved in the transfer was some non-real estate items, specifically reimbursement for cultural costs. On one, one of the parcels, the applicant indicated that on the preliminary change of ownership report, but it was overlooked. And on the second one, it was not indicated. So he provided the escrow documentation and we've subsequently agreed.
But we do have a stipulated value on those two.
We do.
And they agreed upon it?
Yeah.
And we have it here in front of us. Good job. So we could have a motion, I guess, for both? Should we do both, 12 and?
They're both in the same situations.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept the stipulated values.
Make a motion to accept the stipulated value on 5A and 5B.
Second to motion.
We have a first and second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? None. So that is moving on. That's good that you guys got that settled. DeSanti, moving on to 5C. That's number 23 is 2014 ESA Project Co. Company LLC, item 24R017. Okay, so we have, again, no party for that, but we have the assessors here.
Yes, this is Tran Cooper with the Assessor's Office of Madera County. We have a signed withdrawal submitted to Ms. Anderson yesterday, December the 3rd, 2025.
They are withdrawing?
Yes, they have.
We have a copy of that we do in front of us. Okay.
Don't believe on a withdrawal.
You don't need it.
I've provided you a copy.
Yeah.
We don't need the assessor's signature for withdrawal.
We got one from the owners.
You only need, you only need it if it's an agreement that you've agreed upon.
There's no agreement on, on value, they just withdrew.
No, but I'm the other ones. When you agree, you discuss to agree, you need the assessor.
Correct.
Both, both the applicant and the assessor.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, we're good with that? Okay, so we have, we have a motion to withdraw this 2014 ESA Project Company LLC 24R017. We have a motion. Rob moves.
A second?
We have a first and second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? None. Okey dokey, so let's move on to number six.
We didn't have any pre-scheduled stipulations. Instead, we had the last minute, so we can go ahead and skip that one.
So seven is item, actions, items for discussion and direction. 5A, we have number 25, which is 2026 AAB reorganization.
Excuse me, Betty, is that 7A, not 5A?
We're in 7A, yes.
Okay.
So we're out for discussion. So what do we do here, Sarah? We just discuss it over amongst us?
So I received from Beth and Bob that the request for both to be alternates. And Geraldine just said she'd be here and...
I'm really, I'm really sorry. I had a busy day yesterday.
Oh, I can relate.
I put on a dinner at the office.
So it's, it's for y'all to discuss and decide which three of you. I still do not have a, a member from Supervisor David Rogers' district yet. To be honest, our county isn't the only one that has difficulty finding qualified Assessment Appeal Board members. It is statewide.
Okay.
So...
Getting to worry about that.
So, I mean, he's trying, but...
Does it have to be in that district?
One of the problems that we face is, one, your hundred dollars that you get. The other one is, a lot of them are employed and...
When this started, you got paid dollars down the line.
Well, so since I have been here...
Yes.
Which has been almost 18 years, it's been a hundred dollars.
It has been.
So, just saying.
You even helped us out with a guest reimbursement, so that's good. Appreciate that.
But this board isn't the only one that only gets that hundred dollars. We do have other county boards that are in your same situation.
Well, being that we're shorthanded, we're going to need to just make some nominations. I was wanting to go alternate too, but there's too many of us alternates. I'll go ahead and stick it out another year.
I'll be an alternate.
I'd be willing to be a primary if, if needed, so.
And I'll be a primary too. I just barely got a chance to email you yesterday.
So, of course, whatever you choose today, when we do get that fifth member on board, there, I can bring it back to the board for reconsideration on the seating for primary. That new member wouldn't be able to be a chair pro temp for the first year, but they could, they could rotate in as a primary member. So I just want you to be aware that that is an option.
Wonderful. I'm going to say something, Sarah. It's been very interesting for me, even though I've ran a real estate office for 20 years. It is, to me, it, it has been very important for me for a year to just sit and observe. And I've been involved in a lot of different boards, but it really helps because it gives you a well-rounded picture.
Oh, for sure, yeah. So we're going to have a, does it have nominations? Do we have any nominations here? Anybody want to nominate? And I guess we need to vote on it, right?
Yeah, so I, I need you all to make a motion on the primary and alternate assignments.
Do we want to do one at a time?
And then you also need to choose of those three primary members, which is going to be chair and who's going to be pro temp.
Okay, so...
Can I do it?
You can make two motions. If you choose to move first to make your primary and alternates, and then a second motion for your chair and pro temp, you're more than welcome to do so.
Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead and make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that the primaries are Betty, Beth, I guess I say myself, Geraldine, and then Bob as an alternate. And then I may also make a motion that Betty stays on as the chair.
Okay, well, that's another...
Another year.
Yeah, but we do, is that two or do we do it all together? Is that, maybe we just...
You can do two or, or you can make it all as one. If you want to discuss the chair and pro temp first before making the motion on that one, that's, you're, that's...
You're going to be pro chair?
You mean pro temp.
Pro temp.
I will, I, I will accept that because I know you wanted to be alternate, so you're still a primary.
Okay, we're good. So all in favor of Betty, Beth, and Geraldine to be primary? Betty being the, the chairperson and Geraldine being the pro temp? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so be it. We're going to continue for 2026. So that is that. Anything for the staff now? Do we have anything coming up? Any reports, any updates from our Assessor's Office?
Well, we're going to, I apologize, I don't have an exact count for you, but we are going to try and get all of the 2024 remaining appeals through in March and April. That'll get us into assessment season and then clear it up so we can start on the 2025 appeals that are coming in now. I think the final, final filing date was Monday, but they still, they can be postmarked, so I think Sarah's still waiting for...
Yeah, so at first I thought we were only going to have like 25 and then I got a pack of like eight and then a few other stragglers. So we're looking at like maybe 40 and slightly under so far. But, but that's just in. I haven't validated them all yet, so I'm going through, making sure. So I made decline 10.
So that, that will be still for this year?
That's for the new filing year, yes. So the deadline for submit, their, their filing timeline was from July through, normally November 30th, but because 30th fell on a Sunday, the deadline was extended out to December 1st. But I, early on, I had five. Well, not early on, but September, I received five. And then the bulk of, the whole rest of them, this last deadline, deadline week, which I don't understand because if I reject them, I don't have to allow them to correct them. So I do as a courtesy, just to prevent us any potential lawsuits, so I do give them two weeks after I've reviewed it to correct it. That way, it's in our favor. But, yeah, so, but we're not obligated to do so.
So we're talking about 2025?
Correct.
2024 is done?
2024 will be done in March and April, hopefully.
Hopefully. We're going to try and schedule them for March and April.
Okay. So what's going on with February? Do we maybe have that February off or...
So I, that was going to be the next thing I was going to discuss.
Okay.
Depending on, it would kind of, so Brian had requested, or the Assessor's Office had requested that the, the postponements of Phillips Todd co-trustee be continued. But when he asked me that, because I was somewhere else in my, what I was doing and Brian was really supposed to be doing something else, I forgot to ask him when he wanted them pushed to. And so I pushed them to March, but told Brian he had the option to request the board to put them in February if that was his desire. Since he didn't speak up, I'm going to say that was not his desire.
Yeah, since we didn't have anything else on the schedule, it'll keep till March. We're hoping to have that wrapped up in the next week or two.
And so I did not, I told them I didn't push them for February because I would have to send those notices out this month, next, by next week, I think.
Yeah.
Or within the next couple of weeks. But with the holidays coming and, and some of the projects that I'm working on, such as the software program, among others, I, I just, for my own sanity, didn't want to take...
Yeah.
Yeah. And so I opted not to schedule anyone for February, but if Brian wanted to have these, that would have been fine because that's just me copying it over to another meeting, so that was easy. They've already been noticed.
So you put in our notes, February, March, and April, so now we're not going to have February.
So I am requesting that we cancel February's. We don't have January on the calendar, so we would meet again in March.
Yeah, March and April, correct?
Okay, March and April, yes.
I like to put it in my calendar.
We have to make a motion to do that or...
Yes, because you approved the calendar with February.
With February, aren't I? Okay, that sounds right. Okay, do we have a motion to exclude the February 5th meeting for 2026?
I make a motion?
We have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None. So no February meeting in 2026. Just March 5th and April 2nd for now. Anything else we need to talk about? I think we handled all the business. Sarah?
Writing notes.
Okay. So I called this meeting adjourned. Do we have a, do we have to, do we have to make a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
I'm adjourning it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Have a hap...
Merry Christmas.